Okay, this is Monday, November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four work session. Would you please call the roll?
Josh Hagan.
Here.
Karen Humphries.
Here.
Kathy Krepko.
Here.
Mark Ryan.
My official here?
No. He's not.
Remotely attending. Okay.
I'm not here.
And Jonathan Swift.
Okay, thank you.
Jonathan Swift is absent.
Correct.
And Mark reluctantly, I'm marking him present.
He's here. Okay. All right, he's on the screen. Uh, is there a motion to adopt the agenda for the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Call the roll, please.
Ms. Krepko?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Can't ask Mr. Ryan.
Oh, he can't? He's not on?
Nope.
Oh, because he's not here.
That's right, you have to be present.
Thank you for correcting me.
Covid's over.
Correct.
Okay. Take it away, Mr. Swisher.
Okay, good evening. This work session was called to discuss basically two items, which would be our five-year forecast, which is, uh, needs to head to the state at the end of November. So we'll be, you know, looking at adopting that Thursday. Hopefully, you know, presenting that to the board Thursday. So we're gonna go ahead and start by having, uh, Bob and the Ryan, uh, kinda just kinda review where we're at for the five-year forecast. Ryan, uh, the floor is yours.
All right, I will share my. Can you guys see it all right? All right, have you seen your forecast?
It's coming up now. Yep, we see it.
That's easier. Oops, sorry.
All right, so, um, I'll touch on some, some major changes since the, the last time we met and, um, discuss how those affect the forecast. Taking a look at this as a more simplified view, uh, showing where the district currently is. Start here with seven million one hundred forty-one thousand. You're anticipating, um, twenty-eight million, over twenty-nine million in, um, tax revenue this year, less than twenty-nine million, so about a hundred fifty-six thousand dollar, um, operating deficit. You can see if that moves on, your operating deficit starts to, um, increase, um, till you get to about twenty twenty-nine, where essentially the district is, um, if this, if you continue out, the district would be almost out of funds, um, by that point. Some major changes, um, that you'll notice as you go through the, the forecast. One major one, when you look at the pipeline, is that that settlement is nearing its end, uh, so much so that the O D P has published, uh, preliminary values. So your values on the pipeline are going to be five dollars, twenty, almost twenty-four or million, five hundred thousand dollars. We were expecting that.
So. So Ryan, hold, hold tight. Hey, Ryan. So.
Yeah.
Just clarify, so, eh, what it, when you say it's gonna be reduced by twenty-four million and, and, and I agree with you, that's what we expected. So basically, board, what they're saying is there was, there was an initial valuation of Nexus, say at one point six or one point four billion dollars, okay? And then obviously, when that, and when the pipeline was done, they came back and said, no, our valuation, Nexus feels their valuation is X. The county auditors appealed that, and they came out to what they would consider it worth, which is, you know, which is what we expected. It's about twenty-four million less.
Over the whole life of the.
Of, over the whole life of the, of the thing, correct, Ryan?
Um, so, the district had public utility values of seventy-eight million dollars last year, okay? This year, in twenty-four, we're expecting, you know, public utility value. Not, this isn't revenue coming to the district, this is the property value that of fifty-four million. So this will occur this year, this decrease in twenty-four billion. The, the difference is, that seems like a lot. We were anticipating this the whole time, and the reason is, once again, this is values here, or just pipeline. When we look at what they were actually paying on, the pipeline companies weren't paying on it. You were, you had a collection rate of fifty-four percent. So they said, we don't think the, the property values are worth that extra twenty-four million, so we're not gonna pay our taxes on it. They have not been. And so by them reducing that this year, they're gonna go back and start paying a hundred percent next year of, of taxes. The district's not losing a ton of, of money that you were getting last year. You are losing potential money that if the value, if the pipeline was valued at what it originally was valued at, and they were paying that, you wouldn't lose as much, but they have not been paying that for, for some time.
Okay.
It helps.
So there was an agreement reached that court cases, that here's what district values are going to be on pipeline, and that next year, you're also gonna get a special payment. And so that's the way for back taxes. So the district should get, anticipating coming this year, um, a payment, and I know, um, Mr. Plaza talked to the county auditor on this, around two million sixty-one thousand dollars you're gonna get from pipeline companies as a back tax for taxes they weren't paying, add the three upon property value, not the full twenty-four million more, but what was actually settled back. So that's just two million sixty-one thousand here added in on top of what you've been collecting. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Please explain that, okay?
Yes, thank you.
Is that actually projected in the forecast already?
It doesn't matter, it's never projected in the forecast.
Oh, it's just, it's taken back out.
Immediate transfer back out.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that is, that's correct. So we do have, as you can see here, we do have you going to four million seven hundred twenty-nine thousand this year. And then we have your pump rates going up, so you'll be collecting about two million nine fifty-three, which is more than you were collecting in twenty twenty-four, and two million three twenty-five. But at the same time, uh, that is now being transferred out this year as well, plus the additional amount of future days, which are gonna get some forward. So even though you got the financial benefit of the pipeline being settled, and this one-time large payment, two million sixty-four thousand, the forecast also assumes will be transferred out, so that money's now gonna be, um, transferred out into your, I believe, your, uh, T I fund. So if you look here, I'll show you a bigger visual to make this look, make it look like more sex. This other financial chart will show you. That looks like, you can see here is your large transfer this year. The reason that that transfer's jumping to three point four million, because it includes additional two million sixty-one thousand. And then the reason why you are jumping over three hundred fifty thousand, twenty-six in transfers out compared to where you were in twenty-four, because with those new accrued upon values, and assuming the pipeline was paid a hundred percent, that court case is settled, um, that you'll be transferring additional revenue out, um, each year into that T I fund. So, um, as the superintendent said, it does include the forecast, but it doesn't have an impact on your operating deficits, if you will, because, or operating surplus, if you had one, because all been transferred out of the general fund.
Okay.
Got it.
The good news is, is, um, you know, overall, your revenues are coming in extremely close to what we have in the forecast, still collecting, um, a little bit more than, than interest income that we're anticipating, uh, which is good. We do, the forecast is projecting that interest income starts to decrease, uh, more than this year for two reasons. Number one, once again, when we look at this, uh, dashboard here, the district, as you start deficit spending, your cash balance goes down. As your cash balance goes down, you don't have much, much to invest, therefore, your interest rates are going to, uh, your investment income then drop. And then also, you're starting here to, as the Fed's starting to lower the Fed fund rate, which is starting to affect your, uh, investment income, uh, because we're gonna expect that you start high, and then it's like, if you have money to invest, that's probably, um, as well. So those are the reasons in the forecast. If we go over some more of the detail here, on the revenue side, once again, what you see here in orange is the public utility. See that you do have some growth in real estate, as you got done through reappraisal and got to two, twenty-one floors, that has been included in here as well. You'll notice that twenty-seven is pretty flat compared to the increase that you saw between twenty-four and twenty-six. That's because twenty, fiscal year twenty-seven, the only year that you're not affected by reappraisal or by trial updates. And so, starting in twenty-eight, it was the first half of the tax of the reappraisal, uh, sorry, trial update, and the second half of taxes, twenty-nine. You guys are still quite a ways away from knowing where the housing market is, economy is at that point, so we definitely brought back the increase in values compared to the historic increase that you had much in this past year. Brought those down significantly more to where historically we're prior to that, that the housing boom. Any questions on that? Also can see, when you're looking here at the green, this is your state aid, and what you wanna do is, is combine your state aid with the red, if you form state aid, you have unrestricted and restricted, combined in your full state funding. And so, um, the district going to C E P this year for food service, it shifted, it didn't necessarily produce additional revenue for the district, what it did do is shift more into, uh, restricted funding, um, less unrestricted. They continue to see E P program for funding purposes, not for food service, but for how to calculate, um, economic advantage, then that trend would continue. Overall, you're not seeing any large increases at all, and really any change, um, in state funding, because the only reason you're seeing any change is, uh, transportation funding is seeing slightly increase there because it outside the funding guarantee that's currently on. So, uh, we've talked about, we've talked about real estate here, we've talked about the public utility, once again, these are your state aid numbers. Um, there is a slight increase, you'll notice, in state aid, because you are getting some one-time refunds of, uh, stipend funding that's been included in here. So that's why twenty-five is gonna be like higher in total. Then purple here is what you're looking at, your home set roll back. So this is directly related to property taxes, as homeowners, property values go up, this is under occupied discount, uh, by two and a half percent, you get a ten percent on residential property. So the property values go up, this reimbursement goes up, and it's all from the state. And then finally, we're talking about with your other operating revenue, you can see that this, in twenty twenty-six, actually, we have a peak of revenue here. I believe you have some tip revenue built into there as well as you guys are, are collecting federal Medicaid and tuition revenue goes here, and we start to decrease. And a lot of that decrease in, I think, property value. Any questions on the revenue piece? As we look at, um, expenses, obviously, your large expenses here are gonna be in, um, salaries. You'll notice there's a pretty big jump from twenty-four to twenty-five in salaries, it is more than that was expected, and that's because you were paying for, um, some of your salaries and benefits using federal E S R funds. Those have now expired. So last year, actually, this August was the last time you were able to spend those, and so all of those expenses have come back into the general fund, and that, along with longevity increases, base wage increases, is the reason why they're seeing larger increases here compared to where you were in twenty-four. You also had some additional salaries come back, but not as getting much bring in federal grant funding in other areas. That caused a little bit more of an increase in, uh, and then this orange here is gonna be the benefits. The benefits are also going up across the state, with health insurance, reaching much higher rates than it has historically. The good news is, right now, your rates are not increasing, higher ones are seeing. I believe we have ten percent increase in health insurance premium.
We're roughing about eight.
Go through, uh, um, fifteen at highs, twenty-seven percent health care. So it is really, uh, jumping right now across the state.
Ryan, could you, could you repeat the reason why our personnel expenses, uh, increased, even with the cuts that were made?
Yeah, you had a large number, not large, but you had, um, some significant dollars that you were offsetting general fund salaries with federal E S R funds. So when you receive a federal E S R fund, you took the cost out of the general fund and paid for it out of separate funds. Those funds have now expired, and this has been, this was anticipated previous forecast as well. We brought those back into the general fund, um, because, and handy paid off E S R, the funds are now, so that's why it's.
What, what line would those come out of previously?
Uh, the five oh seven fund. I think you might have also had some five oh five federal fund that could be wrong, but definitely the five oh seven fund was the larger fund.
It wouldn't be a line on the five-year forecast, it'd be a fund balance that we carry. But when we did last year's forecast, we had to, we had to plan the assumptions, because we knew E S R was out, what would be going in. So last year's forecast, both of them had that, those assumptions in there, which we wanna make sure before, as we still move forward, looking at staffing every year, what we can and can't do.
You also, it affected, um, purchase services and supplies as well. As an example, your tech purchases, um, maybe your laptops, maybe with about a hundred thousand dollar a year, that would use, um, E S R funds to pay for those, those have been brought back to general fund as well. So, um, it did affect more of the staff benefits, although the one you want to do is salaries, uh, comes back in. I can probably show you. I can pull it up, um, before I can show you what was coming out of historically. But actually, I can show you now, you have an idea where those funds were. But just to give you an idea of what was expended, I'll bring this up as a chart, so we can see. But, uh, so here's what, we, this is what was brought this year, and that, this, because it's not part of the forecast, so we gotta drop this out. If you can see, last year, the district spent off three hundred seventeen thousand in supplies of the federal E S R funds, about five hundred eighty-nine thousand in personnel, and two hundred twenty-five thousand in, uh, benefits, and then a much smaller amount, about eighty thousand here, and, um, a little less than eighty thousand in purchase service. Historically, this is what the district spent since you cut those funds in twenty twenty-one. The majority of this, all of this, uh, the majority, the majority of this is coming in this year, a bit smaller amount of what you spent in, uh, July and August coming back next year, but most of this coming this year. Any questions with that? Another area the districts are, is starting to see some larger than anticipated increases, you let your costs across the state are going up significantly. Your district's starting to see those, as much as twenty percent in sub-sections of the state, um, so that is definitely, um, not, it's not, it's, it's an increase that obviously you don't wanna see. That's gonna be right here in the green part, which is your purchase services. The, the good news, uh, is that even though you've had some larger increases this year in purchases, like I said, some of it has to do with utilities, uh, some of it has to do with additional contract and services, and then some tuition costs, um, the district's not anticipating as much moving forward, so it's kinda leveled off compared to what we previously thought this year. And then in the forecast, we've talked about salary and benefits, talked about the purchase of services, um, as I said, not going up as much. Supply costs do increase this year, and a large portion of that increase is E S R funds coming back in because of purchase technology. There were some one-time costs put in there with, at least, textbook adoption this year, so then it, it's lowered next year moving forward to a level. And then inflationary growth, like, the purchase services and supplies, not a whole lot of money at all expended, I think you have one bus, I don't even put some budget in here, uh, for capitalizing a year. And then just your other objects, and once again, um, as you can see here, here's your transfer. So significant, significant portion of your, uh, your tax dollars will continue to be pushed into the T I fund, the general fund that you're seeing in these areas here. Um, I'd say, going back just to this overview, um, working with the district now for, for a number of years, you guys had much larger, um, operating deficits in your forecast historically, especially with E S R came and the additional round of budget reductions that you, and you had, got the district back on the right footing. As inflation is starting to grow, um, and expenses are starting to grow, so your revenue stays primarily the same. Biggest growth you had in revenue was from getting to twenty-four during reappraisal, and then, um, obviously with the pipeline, however, with the pipeline revenue being transferred out, that's not really gonna help offset your general fund expenses. So moving forward, you're starting to deficit spend again. It's not a significant amount here in twenty-five, in a hundred fifty-six thousand. As it starts to grow, especially as you get into twenty twenty-seven, twenty twenty-eight, that's becoming a much larger line item, um, that the district will want to, so, start to look at ways to address that if it, if it, if it, if you get closer to twenty-seven. And it starts to reduce your cash balance moving forward. Any questions I can answer on that?
Do you have any suggestions as far as reducing that number for twenty-seven and beyond?
I know the district has gone through a number of budget reductions, and that's always a tough question, even when I used to be a treasurer as well, where would you reduce the expenses from? Obviously, as you guys have gone through budget reductions, every time you look for additional, the salary benefits being like large expenses, going to have an impact on the educational experience. To me, just from an outsider, and I know that this has been, uh, determination, you know, by the district and a local choice, you know, looking at, at this draft here, this is a, a pretty significant amount of money going outside of the district general fund, but there's a way for you to recapture a portion of that tax base and maintain it in, if, you know, once you guys meet your capital improvement need. This is, now this court case has been settled, there's definitely some consideration, do you reduce the amount of money being, you know, transferred out in order to help offset that operating deficit? Would probably be one area that you potentially look at. Like I said, when you look at your, at your budget as a whole, with so much of it being in, um, salary benefits, and, and so much of your purchase services being fixed costs, especially being like utilities, um, it's, it's harder to see those areas there, um, just from an outsider looking in without doing a lot of in-depth, you know, analysis and comparisons. That'd be my, that, that's just some of my insight, looking at, as a whole, of the district's total financial area. Help address? Once again, just wanna stress that, right now, you guys are still in a, a pretty positive financial, um, area. If you look back to where you did deficit spending, this is gonna be one of your smallest deficit spends, you had a surplus in twenty-two, a lot of that was produced because of savings from E S R, uh, had a little more deficit spending here, so this year, a hundred forty-three deficit spending, you guys definitely paid an impact on that. And when you take in consideration, all of these E S R funds coming back, that's, that's a good thing, um, that you really can pay that with that on cost coming back to the general fund. And then you can see where this moves as you, as you start going forward. Any other things that can help me answer?
I'll let him look at it for a minute here or two, Ryan, he might come up with some questions here, if you don't mind.
Ryan, you made it clear when Josh asked the question, his suggestions, I mean, obviously, we're, we're people, business, and staffing, I know staffing is the bulk of our, uh, money that goes out when you're talking about salary and benefits, which we, you know, we, we take a hard look at every year, um, as we move forward. You know, you also made the comment that if you're looking at it, and I don't disagree with that statement, that, you know, we get ten percent of our budgets being pulled out every single year. Is that correct? Roughly?
Yeah, I mean, you're, yeah, roughly, a little bit, little less than that, you're a little bit under, um.
So, I mean, it's, and, and by no means am I saying, changing anything of that, it's just, as we go down the road and we look at, you know, because I, I've worked hard to make sure that we're continuing to the board, you know, give the board recommendations to continue to work on the capital improvements of the district. I know that, you know, ultimately, I've always said that, that, you know, we're getting there, be debt-free, you know, so we're, we're getting closer, uh, to that mark here, another year and a half, two years. So it's just, uh, that's, that is, that is, I, that is gonna be, like I said, there's gonna be some hard conversations this board's gonna have to come to agreement with here down the road, but, um, I, I don't disagree. We can't continue to, and I'll be very frank, take almost, and I would say ten, maybe a little less, of our budget out, and think that we're, without thinking we're gonna continue to make it another five, ten years down the road.
Is that the only money that we have that is not included, like in our, you know, the?
Yeah, we're in a good spot now, because E S R's gone. I was very excited that E S R is no longer there, you know, so, I mean, we're really pretty much true to what our district's op, operations can be based on what we have within our ninety-five square miles between property taxes, state aid, restricted, unrestricted, and then any grants that we write to go into. So, I mean, and with the Nexus settling, now that gives us a much clearer picture. You know, I think the, uh, the only outlier out there is, uh, I mean, and we don't assume it at all, like I did not ever assume additional Nexus money, because it's settled, you know, we didn't wanna make a, you know, settlement, even though it transfers out, it's made some difference, would be solar. You know, you know, we're not advocating one way or another, we're just saying, here we go, you know, that's the only thing that's out there that's not true, you know, that.
True picture.
True picture.
Is, is solar considered a public utility, so, a solar farm?
It would be, yeah. It would be, yes.
Okay. And what happens, because there, there are articles being printed regularly about property values dropping because of solar farms in the area. What happens to us then?
So, that question was raised, I think Alan Harrell said if, and only if, next year, that the power site committee decides to move forward with this project, then he would obviously open up to look at what reappraisals would be to adjacent homes or homes near around the solar farm.
So the implication would be that they, those would fall?
Possibly, he said he can't. There's no way he could say one way or another.
But if they fall, our income falls also.
Maybe, like he said, he couldn't, again, he's speculating, you know, without, you know, there's no concrete evidence one way or another, so he can't say for sure. He just said he'd be open to taking a look at that if the power site committee would do that. That's the best he could say.
Okay. But if property values fall for any reason, our income falls, correct?
So the way that that works is with House Bill 920, here's the 20 mil floor right now. So it can't go less than 20 mils.
Okay.
So if property values go up, you get additional revenue. If property values fall, you can generate the same amount of revenue as you did before.
So public utilities would go down.
What would happen is you'd come off the 20 mil floor. If the property values went down, your billage would go up to compensate for the lost in value.
So our values are going to stay at 20 mils. It's the public utilities that are bringing in the additional money.
Okay.
You know, it's no different than.
Okay.
Josh had some unique ideas and just some different things you have to, we have to think about moving forward when it comes to that.
Thank you.
I think the one question was, you know, is this all the money we have? Obviously, the vast majority of your revenue comes in the QQs, offset expenses, comes to the general fund. The only other pocket you have is really your, that is of any significance is going to be like your federal fund, either Title I fund, your special education fund. You know, pockets, if there are any changes in legislation on how those are distributed, that could change. But that, no one knows what that would look like at this point. You're also going through, when you talk about the general fund, this is the end of dividing on budgets that we have. So the legislative will get together and, and vote on and deliver, you know, the governor talk about developing new funding. Where it anticipates is going to stay, they're going to continue phasing in the funding form that's been established, change some of the base costs, and because of how far of a guarantee. Just in case anyone doesn't understand, a guarantee is, there's what's called a 2020 and 2021 guarantee built through this one. And so you are essentially guaranteed to generate the same level of revenue you got back in '21. That's a much different funding mechanism than we had before when it was only within the previous year. And when you take the number of children that you have on calculated base cost, you would need a significant unrealistic increase in students to come off the guarantee. So basically, except for your transportation funding, you're at the same level of state funding that you had since 2020, and you're in the guarantee back end, it goes back to the charter. So you are primarily a locally funded district. You are flatlined on your state funding levels that are within the general fund. Hopefully that helps with the different pockets you guys have.
No, because you said about three years ago, and I use this quite often, was, you know, you may not have the exact number, but when you say we need to just get off the guarantee and actually get more money from the state, the significant number of students that would need to enroll in this district would, would be somewhere in over 1,000 at this point?
Yeah, it was a crazy number to come off the guarantee.
And we also have to be very cautious of students that we lose in general too, because if we load down too low, then we would, that would change the guarantee. Yes or no?
Only on open enrollment at this point now. So if, if you reduce by more than 10% or 20% of open enrollment students here, you know you're going to guarantee even one year penalty. But the guarantee is, there's one guarantee in permanent law and there's one in temporary law. It doesn't really matter if they can change temporary or permanent law at any point. So it's always dangerous how far you are on the guarantee because the legislators don't vote for the funding guarantee. That would have a negative impact on your forecast of the district. Not an occasion yet, but crazier things have happened. So we will definitely continue to update the district as the process will start, you know, January to February, the governor introduces his budget, it then goes to deliberation at the House. They come up with their own form of the budget, goes to the Senate, and then it'll come to conference committee. And hopefully by July 1st, there's a budget that's voted in place. So if there are any major changes, we can update the superintendent treasurer and let them know as we move along. And you'll definitely have a better idea as to the course of the forecast.
Thank you. Or have any additional questions for Ryan right now? He'll be back Thursday if you do, you know, for any additional questions. So we'll bring him back on, so in case you come up with something, you can be able to ask on Thursday if that works for you guys too.
Great.
All right.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you.
Thanks everyone for having me, we'll see you in a couple days.
Okay, thank you.
Just so you guys take a look, you know, when we look at this five-year forecast that you guys have in front of you, you know, the, the lines that are critical to when we talk to the public, you know, or you talk to your teachers, you know, is line, you know, the first one you always want to look at is line 601, 6010. I mean, that's just basically your line that basically tells you, are, are you deficit spending or are you not? You know, at the end of the day. So, you know, if you compare like last November at this time, line 6010 for 2024, we were, we were at 183,000 and plus at 2025, which is the first line on here now. We were supposed to be negative 339,509 deficit spending. Was it projected, were projected 156,595 deficit spending. So we're going to keep whittling away that number when we take a look at it. You know, we didn't really assume too many retirements into this forecast right now. And we officially only have two. They're both at the high school level and they're, one is CCP. The other one is also one that's a little bit specialized. So, you know, I don't want, it's real easy to speculate and say, hey, you're going to take a $100,000, say all together, all in, and drop it to say 60, and you're going to save $40,000 apiece, that's $80,000. But you don't, I don't want to do that right now because of these teachers, you know, I, I don't know how difficult it would be to find or not. So I don't want to anticipate something that may not be there for that aspect of it. Obviously, line 501, 5010 is obviously what I, is just, that's your transfer out, that's your pipeline transfer. I mean, if you take a look at it, that's what you're transferring out. All right, just so you, if you see the numbers on there. And then obviously, 15010 is your on-reserve fund balance at the end of the day. So if you take a look at that, our five-year forecast for the first time, our on-reserve cash balance stays positive all the way to the fifth year. Typically, like I said, we're always negative in that cash balance year four and five. I always look at the first three years as most critical. Like he says, there's a lot of positives in this five-year forecast too, when it goes with that. And we did anticipate what was coming off, so we kind of work on that. So if you do come up with questions, feel free to email Bob or I. If you want to have them, we can, you know, give Ryan some heads up or we might have the answer. If not, that's what we'll be presenting on Thursday for approval. Okay. The second item that I wanted to talk about, obviously, this is a time of year where we have to, we've gone through two phases of the roof. So you have a map in front of you, all right? I tried to color code it to make it a little easier. So phase one was the red, okay? The 26,680, that's the square feet, all right? That was done. Phase two is the green, that was done last year, that was 27,750 square feet. Phase three, which is what I would be looking at for board approval, is 34,600 square feet. And then obviously, a year later, be phase four of 32,500. If you turn it over, the backside of it, you'll see the square feet, the square feet differential, the cost. And then obviously, the square feet cost differential on the backside of that map. So that gives you an idea because, you know, the, the first phase was roughly about a million, 975,000, as you see on the back. The second phase was a little over, about almost $1.1 million is what we spent last year. Josh, if you just turn that map over, it's on the back. And then phase three is obviously, you know, we got four quotes in front of, and four quotes in front of you from the, the compact that we worked with. And we asked for, actually, we asked for all of them to give like a, a base quote for, for basically phase three and then obviously, an alternate quote, which would be finishing it all, just like you just do both phases together. I don't think it's financially responsible for us to do both right now because there's still other capital improvement projects. We're getting closer, like I said, in my, in the grand scheme of it. So I wanted you to see the four quotes in front of you.
Have you used, you used the same company for?
For the last two, we've used Teamcraft, they've done an excellent job. So their, their quote came in at about 1.45, 1.45 million dollars. Triangle, or the, the next, we had another quote at 1.643 million dollars. We had another quote at 1.336 million dollars, but they could not give us exact down-to-the-figure concrete deck repair, concrete deck replacement, gypsum deck repair, and that. And then we had another quote for 2.3 million dollars on that aspect of it. Teamcraft has done an excellent job. I mean, they're, they're just efficient. I can't complain about that work crew. We've got the same crew for the last two years, they guaranteed the same crew if it would move forward. They've, they're here at 3:00 AM, they work till dark. And if the weather's good, I mean, they're done with, in less than 30 days in their timeframe. If you look at the estimated days of doing it. And, and it comes with a 30-year warranty after their three-year warranty's up.
Just even for continuity, it makes sense, in my opinion, but anyway.
Would, would they even be able to do section, sections one through 10 if we wanted them to? Because that's, it's almost a 25% increase in square footage versus the first two phases combined.
Well, I didn't ask about a timeframe as much as it was a cost, I just was curious on the cost.
Okay.
Is really what I asked. I can find out, you know, if that was a possibility. It was one of those where, I'll, I'll be honest, I was, I was hoping, I was hoping the cost would be a little better based on where it was at, but they weren't too bad. When you look at the square footage and the breakdown in the back of that map, it really wasn't as much as it was, I get it. At the same time, I know we still have some paving things. I know at the elementary levels, there's some paving projects that I really want to key in on. The high school paving still has two sections left, you know, that we looked at phases. I mean, there's a few more lighting things I want to get taken care of. I mean, we're close. I mean, we're really plugging at some projects.
I guess the only concern I'd have is just the yearly increases in, you know, per square foot. You know, are we, are we going to, would we possibly save money doing the rest of the roof at once and having it done versus waiting till next year? Would you say it went up $5 a square foot?
You have it right there in the back.
$5.32 a square foot between, that's between one and three.
Between phase one and three, not two, so I guess it's a gradual. You have it, there you have it, the difference between phase one and two. So it went up $2.42 per square foot between one and two. And it went up $2.90 from, from last year. So the total between when we started two years ago to where we're at now is a total, I want to make sure I was clear, between the $5, so it's gone up roughly $2, roughly about a little, between $2 and $3 a square foot each year.
Which doesn't sound like a lot, but then when you add it all up, that's what I'm saying. It's, if it goes up another $3 to next year, how much more is that going to cost us doing it then versus now?
And this is the only reason why, yes, it would. Hello?
It went out.
Oh, yeah. The only reason, I'll just be loud, the only reason we lost, we would, it would be a cheaper option to do both right now to answer your question, obviously. But I don't, let's just say, we stick with, with about 2.79 million dollars. If, I don't know if we have enough to do that and then do any other capital projects because we're not getting the full $2 million in, you know, from nexus that go into the, the 070 account all at one time. You know, we're still, we're still trying to be careful enough for whatever emergency may arise. You know, I did not anticipate the gas line at the high school. Now, that's a one-time fix, it's going to last probably forever, you know. Like, it's still a 127,000 hit, plus the 10,000 from this company, plus one other bill. So let's just say $140,000 that, you know, but we, that was okay because we, you guys, based on what we wanted to use for capital improvements, we had money beside to do that. I, you know, I, we just don't know when it comes to, with any district. I'm not saying anything to that, it's just you don't know with, with our district.
It is, it is something to consider though. I mean, I do agree with that because if you, you know, subtract that. The next phase, or that second phase in blue, is only 1,000, or 1,342.
Yes.
So that's actually, you know, it's a step down. And it's, I mean, I understand it's a little less space, but rather than going up, you know, it, so there is, I mean, we, we do need to think about that, I think. I mean, if, if we have to put other things on hold.
If they can even take it on, so that's, that's a huge project.
I'll get it, I'll get an, I'll get an answer tomorrow. We'll make, we'll make some calls tomorrow, get ahold of Kevin, and we'll talk through some of that and see where they're at with this, with the different groups and that end of it, and then.
And if they could, maybe even, if we did them both, could give us even more of a?
No, I would love to get it done in three years. I, that was always the, the goal, it's just the roof's a little bigger than I thought when we, when we went at it. And that covers in all our roofs. I just, I like, I don't want to mess with our paving protocols right now, to be honest with you. I just like the direction we're going, and we're getting closer and closer. I mean, ultimately, in a perfect world, if I had to make a recommendation, we'd still wait two years on this and we'd get as much of the paving knocked out and be done. So we're just on a maintenance plan after this year. That would include the, you know, but I haven't gotten quotes yet on those, it's a little early, they said, to get those, so. I have no problem looking into that and then give you guys some options on Thursday, and then you can make the recommendation, you guys can let me know what you want to do.
And now, porticulture was included in, in phase one?
Yeah.
Where are we on the Mullen Center? Weren't we having some issues with the Mullen Center?
We took care of that over the summer.
That's already done, okay. Is that included, that's not included in the numbers that we're seeing here though?
No, because that's a steel roof, that's a different, different thing. I think the only question I've gotten, actually in the community, that they asked if we've addressed, they asked, I think Marlboro was collecting water years ago consistently in their basement. And yes, that was addressed, and it was completely bedried and dug up all the way around the inside and some pumps put in. So that was taken care of.
Did we get that line scoped, the original brain that was out that, that they said was partially caved in, which was causing it to?
Are you talking about Marlboro or the high school?
At Marlboro, because they, they had an old tile that went underneath the pavement, back through the back.
I should check in.
I don't know if it's the one you're thinking about, but I remember one digged it scoped and was full of roots and had to be completely replaced.
I feel like that was the high school one.
Yeah, that was probably the high school.
I'll find out.
I mean, it shouldn't be too expensive to run a scope through there if it's possible.
I mean, there's no water in Marlboro since they did that, so that, that's been good. So we've, we've, we've got that covered, I think it's. Which drain are you talking about, the one?
The basement.
Okay.
Well, yeah, they, well, what it was, they put the sump pump system, but my, my concern is still, you know, you need the sump pump to come on when it's raining. And a lot of times when it rains, it storms, there's a power outage, we're going to be back at square one and basement's going to flood unless they have a battery-powered backup system, which I don't believe we do.
No, if they do, I want to, I would speculate. I would rather spend the money on a battery-powered backup regardless, we'll find out about the scope, but that should be there anyway.
Well, if we have gravity drainage, you can't beat that.
No, but I don't know if it's missed, I can get the answer.
Okay. Okay.
It was just, that was a question, community member, I just wanted to, I didn't know who it was that asked it, so I just figured I'd just make sure it was said. That's really all I had for the work session, and I, to be honest with you, those were the two items that were posted for the, uh, the meeting. Um, you know, when it comes to summer projects, we usually wait till the spring, I'll start, you know, getting quotes, and then obviously, anybody, you guys have any suggestions or anything as we go through, just let me know, or, um, we'll kind of take a good look at it, and then we'll have a better idea financially where the 070 and the, and the permanent improvement fund is. Take a good look and go from there.
What did we ever do with the courtyard? Is landscaping ever going to, is our landscaping group going to...
So, our courtyard out here, that's been here since existence, is mode, uh, and, uh, my goal is to partner with a few companies, and I brought them in, and they said they were in it back to me, they even wanted to do an aerial view and come back, and there's just, they have not yet, is to do something out there in collaboration with our current port department, and make it a project for the kids. You know, in a perfect world, I would love to see, you know, and I'll give examples, like a Forever Lawn, and a DeHofs, and EnviroScapes, or somebody, you know, that are willing to come in and show the ropes with the kids, work in collaboration, and then, and it'd be minimal funding on our end, but it would be something that they could showcase that their companies do, or could do, because you really don't want to continue to mow out there, you know, different things, because it's just not easy access, but it would be good for our community to be able to use it, our kids be able to use it, if it's a lot of options, so, you know, it's in the process, it's just...
Are we doing anything with that water fountain that was the stadium?
Uh, I put that on the list for the summer, take a good look at that.
Did that get hit when they did the gas line? The, the water line to that? What happened?
Right, we, it's not even that, it's just, it's been off and hasn't worked for years, so...
It's all they hit, the water line.
Uh, cast gas, you know, the kids jump on it like it's a, a jungle gym in a football game, and, and it's...
They hang it, it's a faucet.
In the faucet, so...
Yeah, I wonder why it didn't work, yeah.
It's, it's one of those things, I, I think it was donated.
It was.
You know, so we want to keep that honor, or the integrity of that honor in place, so either we're going to fix it and do it right, or we need to relocate it or do something a little bit different than where it is, so...
Okay.
Any other questions right now?
No motion to adjourn?
Second.
Discussion, all of them, please.
Mr. Krepko?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Homefreeze?
Yes.
Thank you, see you Thursday.